Call the meeting to order.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bunt.
Yes.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from April 9th, 2012.
May I have your approval?
Second.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bunt.
Yes.
And we have a presentation this evening, naming of the Mexico Airport Terminal to the Christopher S. Kitbon Airport Terminal, and we have to discuss that this evening. Steve Hagan, President of Mexico Airport Advisory Committee. Steve?
Good evening. Thank you. I'm here as Chairman of the Mexico Advisory Council. We meet every first Monday after the end of each quarter. We had a meeting of April the 4th, I believe, if that's the Monday, and we had discussed the motion and the proposition of honoring our past Senator Christopher Kitbon by naming the new terminal at the Mexico Airport in honor of him. And it was discussed by our panel and had unanimous recommendation to present that to the Council this evening. So we'll make that presentation. It is in our minutes. I don't have a copy of those. They still have yet to be formally prepared, but in our minutes, that resolution and motion does stand. Any questions? Seeing none?[113.11][113.11](Laughter).
If I may, Your Honor.
Steve, I believe that Bruce Oliver brought this to you and presented it. I think it's really kind of a part of a bigger issue that he's working on, and I'm not going to put Bruce on the spot right now to comment more about that. But I know that they're doing some things in general terms to help honor Kit, and we thank him for his efforts as well.
Yes, I didn't want to speak on behalf of Bruce, but his committee that's been longstanding in honoring Christopher Kitbon did approach us with that idea due to the amount of funds that Kit, over a substantial number of years, have brought to the Mexico Airport everywhere, from taxiways to runways to terminal building.
And that's where I was going at it.
I read your mind.
It's part of understanding of the reasoning that was brought forward. And thank you. And Council, this is something that you're also interested in entertaining. Russell, as part of the committee member that's part of that, will bring an action forward then for your consideration at a future meeting to make that official.
I'm certain that's something that we would be interested in doing and want to do because of all of his contributions, many great contributions to this community over forty-plus years, I guess, and still does today, by the way.
Okay, very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing, and this is rezoning a property located at 623 East Holt Street. Handy Shop from R-3A Multiple Family Dwelling to C-2 General Commercial. And I move to open the public hearing.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bunt.
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. This has been before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they have recommended that you provide approval, but to cover the details of the property. And what they're asking for, we will turn to Steve Redmond this evening.
Good evening once again. This City Council agenda item concerns a request from the Handy Shop Incorporated to rezone their property located at 623 East Holt, as described below, from an R-3A Multiple Family Dwelling District to C-2 General Commercial. A map is attached showing the location of the requested rezoning. The City of Mexico received a request from the Handy Shop Incorporated to rezone their property located at 623 East Holt, Seconds-to-go resale shop, from an R-3A Multiple Family Dwelling to C-2 General Commercial. A request was originally submitted and scheduled for October 7th, 2003, planning and zoning meeting, but had been canceled. Previous city staff's interpretation of the code was that R-3A Multiple Family was the correct zoning for the Seconds-to-go resale shop as an elomecenary institution of a philanthropic nature, and that is in Section 15207 of our Use Regulations as a permitted use in an R-3 zoning district. I received a request for zoning verification from the Handy Shop as they were securing finances and needed that zoning verification. I was unable to give them that verification because of the expansion that they are proposing for the resale shop is going to take them into another area of quantity, and we felt like this would be a correct time to go ahead and get them rezoned. Their other properties are contiguous with this one. Part of their property is Zone C-2. Another section of their property is actually Zoned Industrial, as you can see from the zoning map. Notices were sent to thirteen surrounding property owners within 185 feet of the requested zoning. City staff received two phone inquiries regarding the rezoning. The calls were with no oppositions. At the April 3rd, 2012, planning and zoning meeting, the Commission made a motion to make a recommendation to City Council to grant approval of the requested rezoning. Staff recommends that Council proceed with the advertised public hearing.
Comments from the Council members? Are there any comments from the public? Since this is a public hearing, you can come forward and give your name and address, and we'll take your comments. I see no one wanting to comment, so thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bunt.
Okay. Under resolutions this evening, we have Bill Number 2012-23, a resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute an option to renew a contract with Brake Brothers for the brush collection site. This is up for reading and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. Approximately one year ago, you had entered into a contract with Brake Brothers for the operations of the city's brush collection site, managing yard waste and grinding and so on. At the time of that contract, there was a renewal option, and that's what we're looking at, but there are some changes, and I'm going to -- some might slight modifications, I would say. So I will, at this point, turn to Kenzie Russell to go over what those changes are and the recommendation.
We touched on the operations and all a little bit in the study session. As mentioned, Brake Brothers was the operator for us through the past year. That was a contract that was advertised for bid, and they provided the best proposal last year. We sat down with their representatives when renewal time came up this spring and discussed the operations with them. The one thing from the operations that we did note, and in part because of the mild winter this year, we had established winter hours as being on Friday, and that did not serve us very well this past winter, and so this renewal would adjust that to be on Saturday instead of on Friday to try to accommodate our citizens a little better. There was also a typographical error referring to a nonexistent paragraph, and so we corrected that in paragraph D to refer to paragraph P, which is where the costs are established, rather than Q, which I believe was what the old reference was. And so those corrections have been made as well. Rocky Mayo from Brake Brothers is present this evening. If there are specific questions, details about the operation there on the site.
Bill Number 2012-23.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bunt.
Yes.
Bill Number 2012-23, Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Option to Renew a Contract with Brake Brothers for the Brush Collection Site, whereas the City of Mexico has a current contract with Brake Brothers for the operation of the Brush Collection Site, and whereas the contract included an option to renew at no additional cost for two more years. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Mexico, Missouri, as follows. Section 1, the City Manager is hereby authorized to renew the contract with Brake Brothers for the Brush Collection Site on behalf of the City of Mexico with the agreed modifications. Section 2, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the time of its passage. I move for passage of Bill Number 2012-23.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bunt.
Yes.
Next resolution we have this evening is Bill Number 2012-24, a resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute a contract with Horner Schifrin for GIS development. This is also up for reading and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. Part of the geographic information system, one thing that was done as a part of the wastewater process was some investigative work which identified a number of places in regards to mapping out the sewer system. And as we've gone through that process, it clearly identifies the need to expand that, as well as this type of system allows us to add other types of layers to develop other things for zoning purposes, pavement, storm sewers, whatever we may want to add. So that is why we've looked at this, and to cover it in more details about what this is actually doing, I will turn to Kenzie Russell.
I hid behind a podium, Bruce. If the mayor will indulge me, I'll speak to both this resolution and the next since they are on the same topic. This first resolution, we have titled as GIS Development. These are one-time costs for the development of the layers that we spoke about, zoning, stormwater and pavement rating layers. The next resolution is a contract for the annual hosting cost, the cost that would be renewable on an annual basis for hosting the GIS and maintaining it for us. And so that's the difference between the two contracts. This one's one-time costs. The other is the annual costs. Jeff, pardon me, the last name escapes me.
Stop.
You heard him.[854.05][854.05](Laughter). From Horner and Schifrin. Jeff is their GIS man director, is present tonight, and much better at the technical question side of things than I, and so he is here if there are any questions on that. The development contract is for $19,900. Monies are available in the engineering department's budget for this. It covers -- two of the layers are primarily engineering-related. The third one is community development, but we're going to cover that for Rita and be nice guys. She calls me grumpy sometimes, but that'll get us started. And as mentioned, as we move into budgeting for next year, other departments would have the availability and the ability then to budget for development of layers that may assist them in their operations. We are recommending the passage of this resolution on the contract.
You say we're probably behind the eight ball in developing this as far as other counties and other cities?
I think so. My experience in working with other communities this size and even smaller, they have already developed GIS systems. We tend to use them every day without thinking about it. Many are available over the Internet. Anytime that we click on a map or a picture and get data from it, CARE's website is a statewide GIS that's available. The county, through the assessor, has the parcel information. That is a GIS type of system that is used, and I dare say most counties in the state of Missouri now have that available, but many other communities our size do have it. Odessa is one that we looked at when we were researching Odessa, Missouri. We looked at -- and I can't -- it was Perry, Iowa, I believe, up in Iowa, which is a community of about 4,000, 5,000, I believe, population. We looked at their GIS to get a feel. We did put out a request for proposals, qualifications and proposals, and had two respondents, Horner and Schifrin being one of them, Midland GIS being the other. We evaluated those and felt like Horner and Schifrin was the best for us to start up with.
The $2,500 hosting service, that annual fee, is that something that, you know, we could see next year be 3,000 or 4,000, or is that something that's locked in for a period of time?
This is just a one-year agreement, and so that cost, and Jeff, you may want to speak to this, but that cost could be subject to some change. I think it is fairly stable. There could be additional costs to us depending on the frequency of our updates and maintenance. If we kind of do our job and bundle that up and make it easy, it won't cost as much to do those updates. Jeff, do you anticipate that $2,500 changing any of the next year or so?
No, we use a standard contract rate that we've used for the past four years for most municipalities of this size. The only thing that we -- it would only impact that is if the county at this point, or the city at this point, decided that they were going to add increased services such as mobile device connection, or editing, or some other layer of services at this point. But with what you have now, even adding more layers and more services, you wouldn't necessarily have to add more costs. And we don't charge per user fee either, so it's not -- you wouldn't have to worry about whether or not this staff was larger or not.
So it's been stable for four years, anyway?
Okay. So the $19,000 for the one layer, or how many layers?
The $19,000 is for three additional layers. Those are the one-time costs to develop those three additional layers and get them put into the GIS that we were looking at earlier this evening.
Kelsey, who would own this once it's developed?
The city owns the data. It resides on computers and servers at Horner and Schifrin. If we had a falling out and we chose to move our data to someone else's server or to our own server, we still own the data. We'd be able to do that.
If their computer depresses, is it something that's backed up, or how does that work?
I'm going to let Jeff respond to that. It is backed up. He can give you a little more detail as to how that, the security of that and such.
All of our servers are redundant. We have ALAN systems in place as well. We have backup generators at our site as well, and all of your data is actually backed up out of our office to two separate locations, one in Kansas City and another one in Pennsylvania, both of which are underground 165 feet. So we contract with another company that does all online backup. All of your data is actually backed up on a 30-minute interval. So every 30 minutes, that data's being backed up. So if at any point in time something would happen, we can get that.
If they take I can, City and Pennsylvania, they're after us, aren't they?
Yeah, they'd have to hit St. Louis, Pennsylvania, and Kansas City, and we all would probably be in big trouble.
Somebody's got to graduate on somewhere.
Anything else? Thank you.
Bill Number 2012-24.
Second.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bunt.
Yes. Bill Number 2012-24, Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Contract with Horner and Schifrin Incorporated for GIS Development, whereas the City of Mexico's IT Services and the Public Works Department solicited firms to provide GIS development services for the City of Mexico, and whereas Horner and Schifrin Incorporated was chosen because they have started a GIS of the city's sewers, and whereas Horner and Schifrin Incorporated would further develop the GIS for zoning, pavement conditions, and storm sewers. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Mexico, Missouri, as follows. Section 1, the City Manager is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Horner and Schifrin Incorporated for GIS development on behalf of the City of Mexico. Section 2, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the time of its passage. I move for passage of Bill Number 2012-24.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bunt.
Yes.
Okay, Bill Number 2012-25, A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Sign Contract Documents with Horner Schifrin for GIS Hosting Service. This is up for reading and passage, and I believe we've already covered that, so I move for reading of Bill Number 2012-25.
Second.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bunt.
Yes.
Bill Number 2012-25, A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Actually Get a Contract with Horner Schifrin Incorporated for GIS Hosting Services, whereas the City of Mexico has solicited several firms to provide GIS Hosting Services for the city, and whereas Horner Schifrin Incorporated was chosen because they're currently hosting a GIS of the city's sewers. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Mexico, Missouri, as follows. Section 1, the City Manager hereby authorized to execute a contract with Horner Schifrin Incorporated for GIS Hosting Services on behalf of the City of Mexico. Section 2, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage. I move for passage of Bill Number 2012-25.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bunt.
Yes.
Last resolution we have is Bill Number 2012-26, A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Agreements with Various Organizations for Requested Funding from the Mexico Tourism Tax. This is also up for reading and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. The Tourism Commission did receive applications for funding. They've reviewed them, making a recommendation, and I will turn to Roger Haynes to cover what they are recommending.
As Council is aware, we do collect a tourism tax off of our hotels and motels for when people stay, and then we allocate those funds to promote tourism to Mexico through reimbursing advertising expenses. This past Wednesday, on April 18th, the Tourism Commission met to review three applications for funding. I'll review those organizations and what they requested, and then what the Commission recommended. The first organization was the Missouri Civil War Heritage Foundation. It's a festival for the U.S. Grant Trail, Grey Ghost Trail. Again, the purpose is for advertising maps. The amount requested was $2,000, and the amount recommended was $2,000. The Mexico Young Farmers, for the 2012 Truck and Tractor Pull to be held on June 9th, requested $4,485, and the Commission recommended $4,485. The Mexico J.C.'s, for the 2012 Soybean Festival to be held on July 13th and 14th, requested $9,500, and the amount recommended by the Commission was $5,000. To give you a little bit more background on these, the Missouri Civil War Heritage Foundation would be a new endeavor to promote tourism to the Mexico area. They would be providing mapping of the U.S. Grant Trail, which General Grant did stay here in Mexico, and of course was even nominated for, I think it was Brigadier General while he was here in the Mexico area. Other things this would do is not only promote activities to the historical museum site, which is where he stayed, but also to other locations in town which had historical value in the Civil War. This would provide, again, mapping that would be mailed out to people that live in the Illinois and Iowa areas. They seem to like the Missouri area for proximity as far as doing Civil War-type vacations, trails, however you might want to call that. It would provide a map that would show Mexico, Missouri as a designated stop. Other stops that are already on that map would be the little area of Florida, Missouri. You have Boonville, Missouri. You have Fulton, Missouri, Danville, Missouri, where we've not only had either the U.S. Grant came through or the Grey Ghost Trail took place. I do know from the presentation that was brought forward by Mr. Greg Walk on April 18th that Fulton and Boonville are already participating in such endeavors. The Mexico Young Farmers, again, was requesting the $4,485. They've requested a similar amount in past years. Budget-wise, it just was not feasible to meet their total request. The Commission found that some entities that requested money in past years were not going to be requesting money this year, so they wanted to try to meet that full requested amount, feeling that it does really bring a lot of people to the community and create some overnight stays due to the tractor pull. Mexico J.C.'s, again, a two-day event. They had requested $9,500. The Commission recommended $5,000. Not that they would not like to give more, but they have a budget of $42,000 annually. They had already committed before these three recommendations $22,289. When you take that already committed plus this new commitment, that would leave them about $8,200 roughly, depending on what kind of new taxes come in, what type of revenue comes in for the rest of the year, and they have not received a request yet from Walk back in time. Staff recommends that Council concur with the Mexico Tourism Commission's recommendation and proceed with reading and passage of the attached resolution. I'd be glad to answer any questions if I can.
Any questions? See anyone questioning. Lou, is it -- can we do all of these together? We can. Okay. Thank you.
Bill Number 2012-26.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bunt.
Yes.
Bill Number 2012-26, Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Agreements with Various Organizations for Requested Funding from the Mexico Tourism Tax, whereas the Mexico Tourism Commission reviewed an application from the Missouri Civil War Heritage Foundation, Mexico Young Farmers, and Mexico J.C.'s, and whereas the Mexico Tourism Commission recommends to City Council that the Missouri's that the Missouri's Civil War Heritage Foundation, Mexico Young Farmers, and Mexico J.C.'s be allowed to receive tourism funding for their tourism advertising campaign. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Mexico as follows. Section 1. The City Manager be authorized to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Mexico with the Missouri's Civil War Heritage Foundation, Mexico Young Farmers, and Mexico J.C.'s for tourism funding. Section 2, the resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the time of its passage. Move for passage of Bill Number 2012-26.
Second.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Botts.
Yes.
Under new business ordinance this evening, we have, well, we have the sales tax proposition here, so I'm going to turn that over to Bruce at this time, and we'll talk about which, how we're going to do this.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. I think as you all know, this has been a topic of discussion for some time in regards to funding considerations for parks. At the council meeting two weeks ago on April 9th, it was under consideration, and council at that time had recommended that an ordinance be brought forward for 3/8 of 1%. I think as we know that funding in whole, when we look at the general fund, and everything has been under strain for some time, and as it is becoming more and more difficult to transfer the needed funds to support park operations, and therefore this is what has brought this discussion forward. Council, there are two ordinances potentially available for your consideration this evening. Each ordinance that, or either one you may choose here as you proceed, calls for an election for dedicated park funds, sales tax, and 100% of that amount collected, if approved by the voters, would be used to pay for park operations, building structures, general park purposes, maintenance improvements. The first ordinance, as you had directed at the last council meeting, calls for 3/8 of 1% dedicated for the park sales tax. And of course, that would increase the fund and allow the park fund to come closer to meeting its depreciation annually. Following that meeting, council had called and expressed interest as individuals to myself in regards to different options and funding available, and different ways to look at it. So, as part of those individual discussions that you had had, this is where the second ordinance comes from, as a proposal to you that come forth from those discussions, which is the second ordinance then, if you choose to go that direction, would first of all call for a reduction of the property tax levy for parks by 10 cents, which is per $100 of assessed valuation. And this then would impose 1/2 of 1% dedicated park sales tax. This would then increase the fund balance and allow the park to meet depreciation annually. It would help improve park offerings and make some construction of occasional improvements as funds were freed out. Each ordinance would allow, whichever one you chose, the local park sales tax to be placed on the August 7th, 2012 ballot. Each, by this timing, would allow us that we'd have to notify election authorities by May 29th to make that happen. If, if then, this does get placed on the ballot, and if approved by the voters, the tax would be begun being collected January 1st, 2013, and then we would see our first revenues coming in from that in March of '13. So, again, council, you have the option of whichever ordinance you wish to proceed with, as far as first reading goes. And we're only recommending at this time that the first reading of either ordinance, or whichever ordinance you choose to move forward. And I think with that said, I will quit at this moment, and then if you have additional comments or questions, I think either Roger, or I, or Chad would attempt to answer those for you, so.
Well, I believe all of the city council agrees that we do need additional funds for our parks and for our city. And I know you have some additional information here you included in our package, which shows city-specific totals for sales tax for the communities. For example, Columbia gets 2%, Fulton gets 2%, Hannibal gets 2 1/4%, Marshall 1 1/2%, Mexico 1 1/2%, Mobley 2 1/2%, Wentzville 2 1/2%, and these are all city-specific totals for sales tax. And so, if you can look at this group of cities, if we were similar to the other communities, we should be at 2% if we're doing similar things, so. Even though our sales tax in total is 8.1%. I think we all agree that we'd like to see this thing pass, and so one of the reasons that we looked at the property tax rollback was to give something for the citizens of Mexico, the property owners, to be able to hopefully get some support in passing this thing, so we definitely want this thing to pass. I don't know where we'll go. We'll just operate with a lot less money and a lot less funding for our parks as we move forward over the years, so. Other council comments?
I'd just like to say a couple things. I've talked to a lot of people since our last council meeting. I'd say you got about half and half. Say you got about half the community thinks they're not going to, well, I wouldn't say half and half. I'd say you got about a third, a third, and a third. I think you got a third of people who are going to vote for it, and a lot of you are here. I'd say you got about a third of people who would say, heck no, I'm not going to vote for it. And I think you got a lot of people in the middle that you can convince, and you know that. I mean, you guys are here telling us that you can sell it. So you know there's people on the fence, because I hear people saying, oh, if you're going to vote for it, you're going to vote for it. If you're going to vote against it, you're going to vote against it. Well, then, I wouldn't need people in this audience to help, right? I mean, because they've already decided. Half a percent is a lot. And one of the other things that I find interesting is there's a lot of promises out there. I mean, I have heard it all over the last two weeks. We're getting a new bridge from Lakeview to Green Estates. We're getting a new ball complex. We're getting new tennis courts. We're getting new football. I'm like, that's not happening. You know, and I think it's important that everybody understands that, because I don't want people out there saying this stuff's going to happen, because it's not. I mean, Chad, would you say, I mean, would you agree with me? Even if they get this half percent, that stuff's not happening. Yes, yeah, exactly. You know, so I think that's important to put out there, because a lot of people are wanting this because they're expecting this stuff, and it's not in the budget, even if they get a pure half cent. So we've kind of come up with this agreement, you know, for the half cent, and then maybe later on, we can do something with property tax to get some of these bigger things. But I think another thing to realize is that if we do this, I saw the sheet that, I guess Roger put this together? Or I don't know who put this together.
I think this is Chad's sheet.
Oh, is this Chad's sheet? Oh, Chad. I saw in here, so I went through, and this is the property taxes for the whole state. Or not property, sales tax for the whole state. You have Hannibal on here, it's 8.975. That's for Rawls County. And they said, I called them today, and they said that it's negligible, the amount of sales tax they get there, because the rest of Hannibal sits at 8.6, which is where we would be at. And we would be tied with them as the highest sales tax in the state for a city over 10,000. And I hate to say this, but we don't provide the same services as those other cities do. We don't even have a full-time fire department like these other cities do. So you got some selling to do. But I'm here, and Chad knows I've been backing him up the whole time. My biggest concern is it's got to pass, because if it doesn't pass, the parks are going to be in big, big trouble. You're talking about it's going to get gutted, because the money's just not there. And so some people come to me, they're like, the 3/8s. And my concern is that I wish I could give him a full percent. I just want to get something passed, so he doesn't, so we don't have to gut the parks. That's my biggest concern. So if a half percent with this is what, you know, is going to work, and you guys can support that, I'm all for that, so. So I would say I will support the half.
Other comments?
I would support the half with the rollback.
However, if I support the half, the rollback just tomorrow's select one.
I guess we need someone to...
I make a motion that we have a reading on Bill Number 2012-22, add a 1/2 cent sales tax with a 10.00 reduction in property tax. And, yes, per 100 valuation. You've got that all down?
Second.
First reading by title only.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Botts.
Yes.
Okay, next we have Bill Number 2012-25.
We need to actually read the title.
We need the reading.
Sorry.
Bill Number 2012-22, An Ordinance Calling for an Election in the City of Mexico, Missouri on the Question of Reducing the Property Tax Levy for Public Parks by 10.00 Cents Per $10 Assessed Valuation and Opposing a Sales Tax of 1/2 of 1% for the Purpose of Providing Funding for Local Parks, Designating the Time of the Holding of Said Election and Authorizing and Directing the City Clerk to Give Notice of Said Election.
Okay, now we're ready for reading of Bill Number 2012-27. An ordinance for zoning property located at 623 East Oak Street, Handicap to C2 General Commercial. This is up for two readings by title only and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. Earlier this evening, we held a public hearing on this, so we have nothing additional to add unless you have questions. And as stated, the staff would recommend you proceed with the two readings by title only and passage of the ordinance.
Make your motion, Bill Number 2012-27, two readings by title only and passage.
Second.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Botts.
Yes. Bill Number 2012-27, An Ordinance Amending the District Map Referred to in Section 15-142 of the Code of the City of Mexico, Missouri, Zoning to C2 General Commercial. Move for second reading of Bill Number 2012-27.
Second.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Botts.
Yes. Bill Number 2012-27, An Ordinance Amending the District Map Referred to in Section 15-142 of the Code of the City of Mexico, Missouri, Zoning to C2 General Commercial. I move for passage of Bill Number 2012-27.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Botts.
Yes.
Under other business this evening, we have a staff report, award, awarding bid for the purchase of a wheel loader. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor, this bid is part of the state cooperative of purchasing. And to cover the details of the bid, I will turn once again to Kenzie Russell.
City currently has a front-end loader or wheel loader that is one of our larger pieces of equipment that we use regularly for a variety of tasks. It is at the point where the best value on trade-in is approximately now. The number of hours are such that we need to be considering doing that. To that end, we budgeted for purchase of a wheel loader, and that budget originally anticipated a lease purchase over seven years. With the leasing of the city's building, Bentley Building, there has freed up monies that we thought would be committed for those lease payments. And Roger indicated to me that we should be able to make a purchase outright instead of leasing. That will save us the interest costs and be a savings to us. We also will have a trade-in or a sale value of our existing loader. Currently, the loader is being advertised for sale on Gov...
Govdeals.com.
Govdeals.com. And we have a trade-in offer from Tri-State Equipment, who was the low bidder on the state contract as well. And we have the ability to take whichever deal is most favorable for us out of that. Tri-State has agreed to let us either do a sale or do a trade-in, either way. The cost of the new loader is $130,290 with the trade-in and/or sale. It will be something under $100,000, and that will be within the available monies that we have. We are recommending approval of a motion to purchase a John Deere 524K wheel loader from Tri-State Equipment based on the bids of the state purchasing contract. I might mention that those bids are current, are new bids that were just taken here in the month of April. And so this is not something that's almost a year old or anything like that. Brian Rau is here from Tri-State as well, and certainly is available if there are questions regarding the wheel loader or regarding the bids. My apologies.
Is there an end date on this auction or whatever it is?
May 14th, May 17th. The bidding just started at 7, 7:00 or 7:30 this morning. We've already had positive activity on.
Good. So you're asking us to approve a purchase. We don't know how much the purchase is going to be.
We don't, well, we don't want to release the trade-in amount for fear of affecting any potential bids that might be out there. And so, yes, in a sense, we are asking that the net purchase, or the gross purchase cost is $130,290. That is the cost. We just don't know what the trade-in or the offset may be.
What is a warranty on a new loader? Are we talking a one-year warranty, or 5,000 hours, or what?
A base machine has got a one-year warranty, one-year unlimited hours. We can go up to seven years, 10,000 hours, and warranty.
Okay. What will this one have, then? Is this a base machine, or?
Base machine has got the one-year on it. We've given some numbers to everybody. I don't know exactly what number they've got fixed in there. We can figure that out pretty quick.
And I'll be honest, I'm not sure.
We have a trade number on this loader, so I mean, there's a guaranteed trade there. I'm assuming that if they get more Govdeals, they'll sell it outright. And if it's not, then they're just going to do it anyway.
We did purchase an extended warranty, Mayor, and I don't recall whether it's a two-year or five-year.
I don't remember detail either.
The number that I must state is a five-year, 2500.
Okay.
We went with that.
Okay.
I think it just should last longer, eight years, shouldn't it?
Occasionally. Occasionally.
Nothing runs like a deer.
There you go.
What's your pleasure, council?
I move we authorize the purchase of the John Deere 524K wheel loader from Tri-State Equipment Company.
Hopefully, we'll get $100,000 off trade-in.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lesh?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Botts?
Yes.
Next, we have an appointment to the Mid-Missouri Solid Waste Management District Council. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. The appointment here needs to be filled by council. Barbara Pickering, which is sitting here in the audience this evening, has been the city's representative on the council, but due to her retirement, we need to appoint a new representative. And I am recommending to appoint Rita Jackson. Rita has worked directly with the solid waste management through the tire collection program, through our solid waste management, hazardous waste, waste facility. So she's very familiar with them and their workings. And so I think that's a logical appointment. And therefore, I would recommend her appointment and ask that council approve that appointment.
So she is volunteer for the position?
It's duties as assigned.
She'll show up next week, I mentioned. I'd like to recommend that we appoint Rita Jackson to the job that was so diligently done by Barbara Pickering before.
Second.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lesh?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Botts?
Yes.
Next, we have the claims.
Then we make a motion to pay the bill.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lesh?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Botts?
Yes.
Next, we have council comments. Councilman Botts?
Well, it's pretty exciting that we're going to come up to speed here with our GAS, developing a GAS system and the Everbridge system, both. I think those are great and will really enhance our city's services. That's all I have.
I also do appreciate those items and also enjoyed Earth Day, even though it was kind of a yucky day. So I appreciate the parks for that.
The S will be a great asset also. And I hope the half cent passes. Got a lot of work ahead of us, so it'll be a go.
I don't believe I can add anything to that, man.
Bruce?
Your Honor, I just need you to look at your calendars, and we'll discuss it at the next meeting. But the second meeting of May, May 28th, is actually on Memorial Day. I'm assuming you probably don't want to meet that night. So I ask you to take a look at your calendars, and at the next meeting, we will need to adjust when you want to hold that one. That's all I have.
And I appreciate all the comments that I've gotten over the past couple of weeks in regard to the sales tax on the parks. And, you know, it's good to get comments on these issues, pro and con. And hopefully, the citizens of Mexico will come out and support this thing so we can improve our communities, so. That's all I have, and we'll move to public comments. So if anyone would like to make some comments this evening, come up to the microphone and podium and give your name and address.
Nancy Eckern, 13252, Audrain Road, 913. I just want to say thank you very much for considering the half-cent sales tax. I do not live in the city, so I can't vote for it. But I am certainly willing to help in any way I can to get it passed. I'm certainly a big believer in the parks system. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Michael Myers, 724 South Jefferson, Mexico-Missouri. My disappointment is erased. I do wish to thank council for reconsidering this and leaving it, of course, to the citizens for their vote. And we have a lot of work to do of getting that to take place. But that could not take place without your reconsidering the avenue that you wanted to take this with. So I can only speak for myself, but I really, really thank you for doing this.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ralph Miega, 328 Tealac Road. I was interested in some clarification in Mr. Williams's comment that we will have half-cent sales tax and reduce the, I think it's 20 cents, down to 10 cents of the property tax. And maybe we can do something later on. What's that something? Are they going to raise the sales, the property tax again then in three or four years, or what are we going to do?
I'm referring to if they're later on down the road, like they talked about the pools, or if they wanted to do some kind of bond or, you know. I don't have anything specific, Ralph. I just wanted to make it clear that people understood that even with the half cent, they're not getting a bunch of new fancy places to do stuff, because the parks funding, that's just how bad it is. I mean...
Well, we certainly need something. And I, you know, I'm not so sure about the half cent, but at least we need, you know, we at least need three eights. The Landlord Association is going to have to address this issue, because we've been getting a lot of calls from tenants. And they've been, you know, sort of nebulous calls, like, well, what is this all about? You know, what is, what's this money that they're going to vote on for? And how much is it going to cost us? Well, I don't know what it's going to cost them, it depends on what they spend, you know. I think, Chad, you said something about $15,000 would be the breakpoint?
The difference in between a three eights and a half, if you take about $15,000, $200, a half cent all on its own, about $3,800, I believe, of retail spending to generate as much money as the property tax and rollback.
Oh, I've got, we've got to get those figures from you. I'll talk to you later about it.
Anytime you have more people, I'll come to a presentation and give you the numbers.
Well, okay, all right. I guess my concern about this is that a lot of people, hardly any people really, most times show up to the city council meetings, which I think is unfortunate. And according to our figures, around 42 to 45% of the population in this city is rental. It was their tenants. They don't own property. And so this is not going to do them any good. We, the council and I had gotten, and so far I've gotten six, just from my tenants alone, and we'll be getting, I'm sure, more, is that we've been trying to be very supportive of it and so forth and so on. But the rollback is going to be for people who have property, which is not going to affect tenants. You know, it's going to affect me. Well, that's fine, I'm glad of that, but I don't really need it. And I don't know as, a lot of people, some probably should, they could, but a lot of people do need it, you know. And so, I just hope that we can answer those kinds of questions in a positive manner. Because we've heard a lot of feedback from this, that it's not positive. And I think you're right. I think that, I think we have a hard job ahead of us in order to get this, get this passed, get this going.
Thank you, Ralph. Anyone else?
I just want to make an announcement. On the Saturday, we'll be doing the prescription drug tape back at the city-county health unit. And so anybody that has any expired drugs or medicine that they're not taking anymore, that they need to get out of their medicine cabinet before it falls into the wrong hands or gets into the water table, bring it to the health unit between 10 and 2 on Saturday, and we will begin it to DEA and they'll take care of it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lesh?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Botts?
Yes.
It's a double yes. Yes and yes.